Okay, I'm going to reconvene the special meeting. Is there anything to report? Mr. City Attorney.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Nothing to report tonight.
Okay, I will consider the special meeting adjourned, and I am going to call to order the regular meeting of the Folsom City Council for October 8th, 2024. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Okay, Councilmember Sorba.
Here.
Aquino.
Here.
Chalamchela.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
And Kozlowski.
Also here. And if everybody will please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible)
We are going to start with business from the floor today. We are going to start with business from the floor today. This is an opportunity to speak to the council on items that are not on the agenda. The normal process for this is that you get three minutes. We have a timer on the wall and little lights on the podium. And will you please call the first speaker?
Okay, the first speaker will be Jackie Saludy. And then after Jackie, followed by Ronald Carter.
Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. First, I want to just start with saying thank you all for everything you guys do do for the city. Anybody who knows me knows I'm blunt and to the point, so please don't think I'm pointing my finger at anybody. I was at the town hall meeting, and to me, this right here was not a very, it was a very, it was obvious to Moses was not a very well-hidden attempt to push for Measure G, the so-called Citizens Initiative. I'd like to know, did the city management attorneys or any council members engage in any type of verbiage with helping write Measure G? Phone, email, were they engaged at all? Whoever put out this glossy newsletter to spread doom and gloom, and then, oh, boy, here's a solution on the back, in my opinion, it seems to not only be unethical, but maybe even be breaking election laws, which I know others are already looking into. Not one part on this glossy newsletter does it talk about the almost $7 million in revenue surplus. It took, as it says in here, "Since the Great Recession," 20 years ago, "to acquire $20 million in a structural deficit." So why on God's green earth do we need a tax increase of $29 million extra tax dollars a year? It's time to go back to the drawing board and have a real Citizens Initiative, not one put together with mostly retired city employees and funded by developers and people who will benefit by this money grab. It's time to implement the suggestions by the citizens of Folsom that I've heard over and over again here at the meetings since October of last year. Folsom, we're better than this. We have plenty of revenue income. It's time to spend it better instead of sticking it to the already overtaxed citizens. Thanks, you guys.
Thank you.
Okay, the next speaker, go ahead and approach the podium. Ronald Carter.
Welcome back, sir.
Good evening, council, ladies and gentlemen of the community, and thank you to the law enforcement that keeps us in order. My points are simple and straight. Two weeks ago, I stood here, attempting to do my best efforts, and they failed me in my best efforts. My sweetheart asked me, "How'd you do tonight?" And I said probably one of the poorest public announcements or speech to anybody in my life. I've spoken a lot in my life. Getting to the point, we have issues. We're a nation of laws. The Jarvis Act, I believe firmly, has been violated with Measure G. I need to propose here tonight that that proposal be put on ice. I don't think the foundation is in, foundation of the Measure G is in harmony with the Jarvis Act. I think it's pretty simple. I think that, not what I think, it's what I know. What I know is it's wrong, and I'm going to stick to that point. It's wrong, and it's wrong on its face. In law, there's such a statement, in law, the prima facie case is on its face in Latin. On its face, it's wrong. The citizens of this community are taxed enough. There's five more tax items on this upcoming election that I've counted for the city or strike that, the county of Sacramento. So now we've got six, as far as I can see. How much taxation does a family have to put up with? People are raising their children. When I ran for city council, I had a statement, and it was a simple, simple statement. If it works for families, I said, right from up here, by the way, if it works for families, it works for Folsom. Let's quit trying to tax these citizens, myself included, out of our houses and homes. It's wrong. I'm going to continue to say so. I'm going to continue to rally. And I've got a few injuries right now, but lacks a little bit of brain power, too, by the way. But in any event, I'm opposed. I want to go on the record that I'm opposed, and I'm asking that this proposal or this matter on the, on the election ballot be removed until it's fairly distributed to the people and in concert with the Jarvis Act. I don't think it's hard to do. I think it's only honorable and proper. I hit my head a couple of weeks ago. So I'll be speaking a lot better here in the future, and I'll be speaking specifically against any issue that's wrong. Now, I'm still a little bit goofy, you know, my equilibrium. So don't think I'll always be a little bit goofy like this, but I will say this. This needs to be stopped in its tracks. It needs to be properly distributed through the community and without the city council when I was here about two months.
Mr. Carter, you have to bring it to a conclusion.
Okay. They're going to bring it to a committee. It doesn't seem like that committee was a fair one. I've been asked to slow down, and I'm going to do that, yield the speaker back to the folks that are waiting behind me. Thank you for your courtesy. Have a good evening. Though passions may sometimes strain, we must never break our bonds of affection. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, do we have other business from the floor?
No, that was the final speaker.
Okay, do we have any agenda updates?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. There is additional information transmitted for item five on tonight's agenda. A copy had been previously provided to you, and they are also available on the table in the back.
Fantastic. Okay, will you please call the first item?
Okay, so scheduled presentations is the next item under this, this evening's agenda. Item number one, proclamation of the mayor of the city of Folsom proclaiming October 2024 as National Arts and Humanities Month in the city of Folsom.
Excellent. My thanks to Mrs. Sorba for presenting this one. Just, you got to put the switch. It's on the opposite side from you.
Are you Mindy? So this is a proclamation of the mayor of the city of Folsom proclaiming October 24th as National Arts and Humanities Month in the city of Folsom. For over 30 years, cities have celebrated the value of importance of arts and culture during National Arts and Humanities, Humanities Month, and the city council recognizes that arts and culture activities benefit the residents and visitors of Folsom and are a significant contributor to Folsom's quality of life. And the city of Folsom provides the opportunity for our community to enjoy, to enjoy the benefits of arts and cultural activities through numerous programs and the existence of an active professional art gallery, which is phenomenal. And the Arts and Culture Commission works with the community to increase public awareness, understanding, and participation in the arts. And Folsom has a diverse and vibrant art scene with local organizations providing opportunities for the public to celebrate and participate in performances, exhibits, and events throughout the year to embrace arts and humanities. On behalf of our mayor, Michael Kozlowski, I, Anna Sorba, do hereby proclaim October 2024 as National Arts and Humanities Month in the city of Folsom and invite our residents to recognize the contributions of the arts to the community. I encourage all members of the community to visit our art gallery and attend the many special cultural activities offered within our city. Proclaim this 8th day of October 24th. Thank you, Mindy, and thank you.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here tonight. I am getting over a cold, so if my voice cracks, that's, that's what's happening. I just wanted to thank you for this opportunity to speak on behalf of Folsom Cordova Unified School District. We're very grateful for our opportunity to partner with the city of Folsom. Kelly Pollock says, "The true purpose of the arts education is not necessarily to create more professional dancers and artists, is to create more complete human beings who are critical thinkers, who have curious minds, and who lead productive lives. While FSUSD has students that go on to perform on Broadway, attend Juilliard, come back and teach Vapa for us in Folsom Cordova, join Bonita's Marraachi, work in the art industry, work for Disney, Pixar, and so much more. Our focus is on the development and well-being of our students. Your child's art class involves more than just Crayola markers, scribble dibbles, and hang-on-your-refrigerator, squeaky recorders, trumpets. Arts education is not about the product, it's about the process of learning. Policymakers and school administrators and parents alike overlook the significance of art education sometimes, but these programs can be crucial components to our students' school life. Whether they're practicing lines for a school play or cutting up magazines for collage, children can use their creativity to trap into their, tap into their creative aside and hone their skills that might not be focused on in other content areas, including communication, fine motor skills, spatial reasoning, listening, collaboration, emotional intelligence, so much more." I really could go on. Sometimes folks are not involved in the arts, focused on the product, without realizing that the most important part that we do is the process, is the process for us. The process of making art, the relationships that students are building while participating in the arts. Arts education can help kids engage in school, help them develop social, emotional, and personal skills, enrich their academic experience, handle constructive criticism, bolster academic achievement, improve their focus, have community of friends in a safe space at school. Students who participate in the arts are four times more likely to be recognized for academic achievement, three times more likely to be elected to class officers at their school, four times more likely to participate in math and science fair, three times more likely to win an award in school attendance, participate in youth groups nearly four times as frequently, and read for pleasure nearly twice as often. Imagine that. They also perform community service more than four times as often as the student who does not participate in the arts. The benefits of art education include so much, including an increased awareness of self, mind, body, and voice, and others, collaboration, empathy, improved clarity and creativity and communication of verbal and nonverbal ideas, a deeper understanding of human behavior, motivation, diversity, culture, and history, critical thinking and re-collaboration, focus fostering motivation through creation, better learning environments. Arts education also helps our at-risk students. Arts education makes a tremendous impact on the development, growth of every child and has been proven to help leveling the learning field across socioeconomic boundaries. Arts education has a measurable impact on at-risk youth in deter, deterring delinquent behavior and truancy problems, while also increasing overall academic performance among youth who are engaged in after-school, schooltime, or summer arts programs targeted towards some delinquency prevention strategies. Arts education in schools increases test scores across every subject area, lowers dropout rates, and helps close the achievement gap regardless of socioeconomic status. And this all comes to you from the U.S. Department of Justice Arts Education Partnership. I want to thank you for recognizing Folsom Cordova Unified School District and our part of this community and also proclaiming October as National Art and Humanities Month. Thank you very much.
Just for the record, what, what can't art do? That's very good. It's our delight to actually present this one every year, and I like to pass it around because at least the vice mayor and I have kids that were profoundly impacted in a positive way by the arts programs at Vista de Lago in our case, but it's a magnificent program that the district runs and super important to the development of our kids.
Mr. Mayor, in addition to Mindy, Andres from Folsom Cordova, if I could just point out that we have three members of our Arts and Culture Commission here tonight, Marybel Wyatt, Kat Berry, and Mark Olliman.
Very good. Thank you all. One and all.
Thank you so much.
Okay, now for something equally exciting. Item number two.
So item number two under scheduled presentations this evening is the Folsom Plan Area Semi-Annual Report.
Can you, Jennifer, can you get it up on the screen for me?
You can sing a beat, it'll take a couple of minutes.
There you go.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Pam Johns, your community development director, and I'm here for our regular update on development activity in the Folsom Plan Area. This is something the city council asked for about five years ago when we really started with a lot of backbone infrastructure and development activity, and certainly that has blossomed over the years. We go through a series of slides highlighting planning activity, development, site development activity, building activity, openings and things like that that are, that are happening within the plan area, and Rebecca Neves is here to help me with that this evening. So I'll start with a reminder that the original specific plan was adopted in 2011, and there have been several amendments that all come before the city council since that time. The map that's up here reflects all of those changes and including the ones the city council recently approved earlier this year. We had, over the last six-month period, April 1st to September 30th, six planning entitlements within the plan area, two in the shops at Folsom Ranch, one for Russell Ranch Design Review, a couple of parcel maps, and I will highlight that several of these parcel maps are starting kind of the first phase of what we call large lot maps in keeping with the approved master plan concept, and that's the start of being able to, as master owners and developers, kind of sell and continue to develop within that area over the coming years that's further west of East Bidwell. Over the last six-month period, there were three approvals or actions by the Planning Commission and City Council. I'll just highlight those briefly. The Habit Burger did an amendment to the exterior plan for one of the standalone buildings, and so this is a reflection of that was approved in May at the same meeting. Starbucks came in and asked for an amendment to customize the pad building that was, you know, shown here in highlights down at the bottom, right here. And both of those, you know, the developer worked well with the staff and the decision-makers to get those amendments approved. Finally, most recently, and you saw this just last month, the amendment to the condition of approval for the map in Folsom Heights for Prima Drive to amend the, what was a emergency vehicle access to a utility maintenance road. And so that's the activity we expect that there will be a higher volume of, of activity coming over this next six months, and look forward to reporting out on that. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Rebecca Neves to walk through the infrastructure and development activity.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council. It's great to see you guys. I'm your city engineer, Rebecca Neves, and I'm pleased to bring you an update on the civil construction, building, and mapping activity for the Folsom Plan Area. Pam did an excellent job of speaking to some of the projects and we also, that we also see in civil construction, and so I'll touch on some of the construction progress and applicable mapping. So courtesy of the Folsom Plan Area Landowners Group, we received an updated aerial photo taken in September of this year. This particular one is looking northwest. As you can see, Russell Ranch, Phases Two and Three. Council may be aware, Russell Ranch Phase One is already built out. And we've also highlighted Phases One, Two, and Three of Mangini Ranch and Dignity and UC Davis Medical Sites, as well as a few other key projects such as Fire Station 34 and Alder Creek Elementary that will be covered later in the presentation. You can also see the Folsom Heights project that Pam just spoke on, which is being developed by Elliot Holmes and is currently permitted through repurposing activities. Here is an update on some of the mapping activity. Since our last update, we've approved one final map, which is for Toll Brothers Phase 2B, and you may notice on this evening's agenda, we have the final map for Phase 3B of the Toll Brothers Development. Should that item be approved, it would bring the total amount of single-family mapped lots to 4,479. And we have two additional final maps coming up that you also see on future council agendas as well for Toll Brothers. And we have an updated status on the building permits and certificates of occupancy issued to date. This update includes through September 30th, and from the last update in May, we've issued an additional 200-plus building permits. So we now have 3,491 homes occupied with an estimated residency in the plan area of 9,425 persons. This reflects an approximate, reflects an increase of approximately 1,200 people since the update we provided to city council in May. Here is an updated aerial of Phase One for Mangini Ranch. In our last update, we showcased Mangini Place Apartments, which was our first affordable housing project in the plan area. We're also pleased to see new residents at the Atwell Apartment Complex located off of South Point Drive. And it's, in the not-too-distant future, we're also looking forward to Lot 14 breaking ground on its buildings featuring new condo homes in the plan area under the project name of Cendaro by TriPoint Homes. The builders in Phase One Mangini Ranch include TriPoint, Vendale, St. Anton for the Mangini Place Project, and Lennar. If you look in the upper right side of the slide, you can actually see the progress and the evolution of Atwell Apartment Complex and the clubhouse and its surrounding buildings, which is filling in nicely with both the landscape and the new residents. Mangini Ranch, Phase Two, includes construction of the shops at Folsom Ranch that Pam touched on earlier, as well as Alder Creek Elementary and Fire Station 34, so more on both of those later. Builders of Phase Two include KB Homes, TriPoint, and Beazer, and all three are progressing nicely with filling in their developer villages. Phase Two also includes the now-open and thriving shops at Folsom Ranch. Since our last update, the veterinary hospital is now open, along with some excellent places to grab a bite to eat if you have a chance to go out there. And the plan area's first gas station, Chevron, is under construction and coming soon. And since the last update, Pam touched on the entitlement update for Starbucks, but it has now opened, and we're thrilled to hear that Folsom Plan Area now is well-cafinated. This is an aerial that was originally presented to you back in May. This is the updated aerial, so you can kind of see somehow there are some of the villages filling in with the single-family homes. That allows us to welcome new residents to our community and our Folsom family. Here's some photos of Taylor Morrison's model complex, which is now fully built and selling Here, we'd like to showcase the UC Davis and Dignity Health Projects located at Parcel 61 and 85 respectively. UC Davis Construction is well underway, and the backbone infrastructure for Dignity Health is completed. For proximity's sake, you'll also notice the call-out for Alder Creek Marketplace, which will be the home of our first grocery store in the Folsom Plan Area, and it was approved by Planning Commission earlier this year. Russell Ranch Phase Two is also progressing nicely. Here's a drone photo of Russell Ranch Phase Two highlighting Villages One, Two, and Four. Pam mentioned earlier, Phase Five is under construction, and it's also actually in design review for the buildings, and we anticipate that being heard at the Planning Commission level later on this year. They have their onsite civil improvements are currently under construction. Here we have Russell Ranch Phase Three, as well as Broadstone Estates, still looking in the southerly direction, which is being developed by Lennar. Highlighted here, we also have included the entitlements for Broadstone Estates, which includes Woodside Homes and Shawwood, and they had their groundbreaking earlier this year during the summer. Phase Three of Russell Ranch is being developed mostly by Lennar, both Phases 3A and 3B, and here are some model complex homes for Shawwood and Woodside for Broadstone Estates. And last, but certainly not least, here's the area of the Toll Brothers Development Phases we have, we see at their Regency Projects, and we, they are progressing nicely on Phases One, Two, and Three. You'll notice one of the maps for Phase Three is on this evening's agenda under consent item.
I'm sorry, can you go back one slide, please?
Yes, sir.
The, right above where it says Toll Brothers Phase One, or immediately to the, below that and to the left, is that the park site that's graded right there, or is that another development site that's got all the blue stone exposed?
Honestly, I'd have to go back and refresh my memory from the land use map.
Like below where it says Toll?
In between where it says Toll Brothers Phase One and Mangini Parkway?
Like right there?
Yep, right there.
Okay. I'd have to refresh my memory.
That's either the park site or immediately to the west is the park site.
Yes, that's what my memories are calling to, but I would like to check that for sure.
It'll let Kelly know that there's a lot of rock right at the surface.
Yes.
Okay.
So commencing, here's the, some models of the Toll Brothers projects. So also now, time for the community highlights, which is actually my favorite part of this update. So on September 26th, the city held its ribbon-cutting ceremony for the grand opening of Station 34 for our beloved fire department. This represents the first public safety facility in the plan area, and really, what a beautiful facility we have for our amazing firefighters and firefighting team and medics. Another highlight for the community was the opening of Alder Creek Elementary, which is now in their first year of instruction, welcoming the children on the north side of the Folsom Plan Area. The city would also like to thank its partners with the Folsom Cordova School District. We're excited to see this for our residents. Prospector Park is also under construction and nearing its finish line. There were some unexpected delays with our utility partners, which we've been able to work through. Once we have electrical power, we would be then able to install the sod, which then has an establishment period before it can be handled through sporting events and without damage. And we have also identified an access component that was overlooked for the main place structure. This is also being resolved expeditiously, and, and the city is looking forward to opening the park for the community. We also have an update for the public on the trails networks for the plan area. So Mangini Ranch Trails is wrapping up design and will be released for public bid later this year. Nearly in sync with the city's trail bid, our partners at Toll Brothers will also be releasing for public bid Phases Two, Four, and Five of the trail network, which is shown down here in this little segment. So construction of the trails projects for both the Toll and the city's trails projects is estimated start spring of 2025. I just want to extend a huge thank you to our amazing Parks Department. It is no small feat to get these moving forward, so just really appreciate Kelly and her team, and they just do a phenomenal job for the city. And if you've had a chance to drive around the plan area, you may notice we've taken a break from installing signals for a hot minute, but we are opening up, we have opened up Alder Creek Parkway, and that will serve as the primary access road for UC Davis. I'd also like to give you a brief update on the Phase Two Transmission Waterline Project. You may recall this project is funded through proceeds from CFD 17 and 18, and bonding has been approved at prior council meeting. Since our last update, with the good work of our Environmental and Water Resources Department and Finance Department, we successfully bid the project construction contract for Phase 2A transmission pipeline, which will be installed north of 50 to transfer water to the plan area. The project team also successfully selected a construction management firm to help with the tasks for the near-long, year-long construction that is anticipated. The construction contract is under consent item number six at this evening's agenda, and I just really wanted to extend a heartfelt congratulations to EWR, Marcus and his team for delivering this project, along with careful thought and insights from our Finance Department and our Public Works Department, and this, and our, on our Parks Department. This project really was a team effort to deliver, so I'm just very grateful for all of them, and just, it was wonderful to see the collaboration that occurred to get this. And so that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. As a reminder, these updates are posted on the city's website and through the community development and Folsom Plan Area websites.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Council members, any questions?
Is the cell phone tower discussion going back to the Planning Commission this month?
Yes, it is scheduled for the 16th next week.
Okay, all right. And just a comment, thanks to city staff and every single department, there is not a day goes by that goes by that I do not hear from a resident south of 50 with a request for whatever, weed abatement, petway stations, traffic control, whatever, and the city staff is incredibly responsive, so thank you very much.
Excellent. Why can't any?
I just want to, kudos to, you know, I think, I know recently there was some tragic situation, homes as well. Hopefully, you know, we're going to take care of in the future that situation. Right away, you and Pam's Department acted fast to stop that one until we all feel comfortable. Good. A tiny input on 31, I know we are putting the wrapper around the signals, yellow wrappers, while you are doing, maybe while they are on the ground, it's easy to put the wrappers if there is an opportunity. The yellow stickers they put.
I do, I know exactly what you're talking about.
Kids, you know, love it.
Yeah, so that, what it serves a purpose of, just in case you're kind of curious, is when there's power outages, you can actually see still the signal from the reflection of your headlights. So that's kind of the initial purpose of it.
That's right.
And as to why they're installing it post-installation, that's, I would imagine that may not have been included in the first plan set potentially, or it was an oversight. But we're fixing that now. But I do take that comment and that feedback constructively, and we will look for that in the future.
Yeah, while they're on the ground, right?
Yeah, absolutely. Wouldn't that be nice?
But otherwise, you know, great to see, I was just doing some math, exactly we are one-third built out. Built out and occupied, 3,491 homes out of 11,600.
Yeah, our family's growing.
They are growing. Thank you again for a wonderful job.
Excellent work, thank you. All right, we are to the consent calendar. We have public that would like to comment on Item Number 5, so I'll entertain a motion on any others. You want to talk about Number 6? Okay, so I'm looking for a motion on 3, 4, 7, 8, 9.
I'll go ahead and move 3, 4, 7, 8, and 9.
Excellent. Okay, we have a motion and a second on those items.
Okay, Councilmember Zerba?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
Chalamchela?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Kozlowski?
Yes, and we want you to read Item Number 5, please.
Okay, so the first item pulled for discussion under the consent calendar tonight is Item Number 5, an Ordinance Number 1348, an ordinance of the City of Folsom amending sections 10.20, 0.220, and 10.20, 0.230 of the Folsom Municipal Code pertaining to parking in alleys in the Historic District, second reading and adoption.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council. I'm Mark Rackevan, your Public Works Director. Before we get to the comments from the residents, I wanted to provide the council and the public with an update on some activities related to this ordinance since the first reading, and maybe to explain some aspects of this to folks who weren't here two weeks ago. So again, the reason we need to undertake this action is there's been an increase in parking in the alleys in Historic District. Those alleys are used weekly for solid waste collection, and there's not a lot of room, barely enough room to perform that operation without cars present. If you've got cans on both sides of the alleys and then the width of the truck, it's already a difficult task and made almost impossible when there's cars on both sides. By the same token, our larger emergency vehicle apparatus also cannot travel through those alleyways when there are parked vehicles present, and these alleyways are secondary emergency vehicle access points, and therefore, the Fire Department shares the Public Works Department's concern about parking in these alleyways. Some of our newer alleyways follow standards that were adopted in the late 90s, and they're 24 feet wide, they're paved, they have improved shoulders, they're marked as fire lanes. Most of the alleyways in Historic District predate that standard. The Assessor's Parcel Book for all of those alleyways consistently show that our right-of-way is 20 feet wide. Now, is it always 20 feet wide in Historic District? No, it's not. There are some encroachments, whether it's in the forms of private fences, utility poles, vegetation, that sometimes constrict us below 20 feet. But the letter of the law is we have a 20-foot right-of-way in all alleyways in Historic I won't belabor this point, we're just simply repurposing two out-of-date codes, unless somebody has figured out where Bug Camp Road used to be. I still haven't figured that out. So at your first reading on September 24th, the council gave us some good feedback on some suggested rewording of primarily the first ordinance. This is the resulting language that if nothing changes, this would be the language that would go into the municipal code and become enforceable in 30 days. At the last meeting, it was the consensus of the council that we perform some outreach to the community to make them aware, if they weren't already aware of the proposed ordinance. The request was that we send out written notifications to the property owners within the Historic District. So in addition to our legally required public noticing in the Folsom Telegraph and posting in the council agenda, we did send out just under 500 letters on October 1st. Staff received a total response of two emails, which are the additional information that's been provided to the council. Both of those emails, in just broad summary, indicated support for the proposed parking restrictions. There was some discussion about defining the width of the alleyways so that people would understand how much space to leave clear. The suggestion in one of the emails was 18 feet, but again, I would remind the council that our legal right-of-way width in these alleyways is 20 feet. And so if we are going to include any wording, I believe is my recommendation that we include the legal definition, which is the 20-foot of right-of-way. Potential impacts, thank you to Pam and her staff this afternoon. They were able to provide me with a good number on how many ADUs are in the district. This was a question that was asked last meeting, and we did not have that answer. The answer is that 107 ADU permits have been issued in the Historic District. Not all of those have been constructed, mind you. Some of them are under construction right now, others may not have started construction yet. I performed a windshield survey throughout most of the alleyways in the Historic District. Certainly, I hit all of the alleyways from the middle school all the way up to Sutter Street between Folsom Boulevard and Coloma Street. What I observed is the vast majority of the ADUs, or the, you know, anything that's backing onto these alleyways, the vast majority of them have parking garages, in many cases, multiple car garages, and/or they have driveways and concrete pads to hold parking on the private property. I did note about five to seven ADUs where I could not find any visible provision for parking. Now, in one case, the thing was completely fenced off, it might not have been an ADU. So, you know, I can't be certain, so I just err it on the side of caution. In two of those cases, the ADUs were on a property that was fronting onto a public street, so there was nearby on-street parking that should be fairly convenient for those folks. So that's my summary of potential impacts. Again, if it's the council's desire to include language regarding the width of the alleyways, it would be my recommendation that we insert this 20-foot-wide public portion language. Certainly, the ordinance language can stand as you originally approved two weeks ago, but again, we'll do whatever the council desires. So in summary, Historic District alleys are 20-foot-wide public spaces with no provision for private use other than vehicle access. The public use in these alleyways primarily consists of solid waste collection and emergency vehicle access. These alleys are not wide enough to allow public parking without impeding the city services. There were a total of 107 ADUs approved in the district, most of which include some form of parking on the private property, but there are roughly five to seven ADUs that do not seem to have any parking and would therefore be impacted. If approved, this prohibition would take effect in 30 days, which at earliest would be December 8th. Signs would be posted at the entrance to these alleyways to inform the public of the restriction and the relevant municipal code, and we would perform a period of education and encouragement before we would actually proceed to enforcement and ticketing. And with that, I'll take any questions from the council or sit down and hear from the public.
So I have a question. So it was about, I want to say, what, two, two and a half, maybe three years ago, where there was a Senate bill that stated that parking was not required for, I can't remember if it was residential and commercial, within so many feet from a transit? So that would explain why there may be a low number of ADUs that don't have the parking, you know, close to it? Is that, do you think that may be one of the factors why it's so low?
It certainly could be a factor. I think, you know, Pam, you might.
Yeah, I think also there were laws predating that, that precluded local governments from requiring more than one uncovered parking space. And so historically, Folsom had had more restrictive ADU requirements than, you know, when the state law came in and then made us change our local ordinances. So we have a wide range of parking situations for accessory dwelling units, not just in the Historic District, but in other areas of the city. But you're absolutely right, the recent laws preclude us from requiring any parking for the ADUs.
Thank you.
How many people, I mean, as you did your, well, you didn't call it a straw poll, but what'd you call it, a windshield?
Survey. Windshield survey, yes.
How many people do you think are using the alleys for parking now?
Well, when I went through this afternoon, it was sporadic. There were, I did count how many vehicles I encountered. I do recall two instances where I had to maneuver my SUV carefully because there were cars parked jutting out and trucks jutting out into the alleyway. I could maneuver a passenger vehicle through there, but there, I could see where one of our solid waste drivers or an emergency vehicle driver would potentially be completely blocked from proceeding down that alleyway. There were a couple instances where there were contractors that were working in the alleyway, so, you know, they had, they were taking up a lot of space, not only with their vehicles, but with their equipment. But I did not take account of how many vehicles were actually parked during my drive this afternoon.
My concern, again, as I mentioned a couple weeks ago, I believe I mentioned it, was that we already have a hard time enforcing the parking in the Historic District on the Since I moved to Folsom, that is a very consistent thing of parking being issued in the Historic District. Not knowing how, I haven't really heard any data on how this will affect that, how many people will now not be able to park in the alley and have to park on the street. So I'm wondering if, I'm assuming I didn't see any, like, major surveys except for your windshield survey. Why can't we approach this as a two-phase approach that do, basically ban parking, do education, but ban parking during waste days until the waste has been pricked up, and see how that affects parking on the street in Historic District, and make that a continual for going on? I think most people can not park in the alley for one day, and would understand the reason why, because those trucks are large. With only, that would be one suggestion, but I think I'd like to hear from the public as well, so that we can see the impact of it and then make a more educated decision on how many people it's going to impact and how it's going to affect the traffic flow throughout Historic District, so.
Well, certainly, no parking on waste collection days addresses the issues that my staff has brought forward. It does not address the issue of emergency vehicle access, which is a 24-hour-a-day, 7-day-a-week situation.
Right.
So, you know, I can't speak for Chief Casano and his concerns in terms of emergency vehicle access, certainly he can.
Right.
But that would be the concern, if we only restrict parking on the one day, it doesn't completely address the impact to city services.
Right. I understand that.
YK, any questions? Tara? Is there, is there water and sewer infrastructure in those alleys in the ground? Yes? I'm getting a nod, yes, from Marcus. Okay, got it. Okay, we'll do public comment now, thank you very much. I want you to call the first speaker.
Okay, the first speaker that we have is Charlene Braun, followed by Jackie Saletti.
Good evening.
Hi, I'm Charlene Braun, and I happen to live in one of, I call it a granny flat. And I can appreciate the fact of having the cars parked weirdly out in the alley. But where we have, you can park up against the wall, so, I mean, it can take care of that. And I agree with, like, the garbage, and I hadn't thought about the fire trucks, but they also could go in the front of the houses too, and with their hose, since there's no water on the outs in the actual alley. And also, while I have you here, the condition of the alleyways themselves are kind of bad. There's like holes. My daughter has called, and they've come and filled the holes, but I noticed on some of the pictures that they had really nice roads that were paved and that. So that's a thought too, for us. But I just think a little more thought could go into it. I have, I'm older, and I have guests that come, and they're older, and for them to be able to park there is a convenient thing too. So it's something to keep in order. Okay, that's about all I have. I'm not in favor of them closing the.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
When you have, you have parking for one, you said?
Yes, I have a garage, but then right outside the garage, they can park parallel.
Okay, and how much does that take up in the alley, do you feel like?
None. I mean, it just kind of come, well, what do you think? What? Two feet?
Couple feet.
Five foot setback.
So you're on, so is that on private property?
Five feet.
Five feet if it is. So when they park there, they're not, oh, you're saying they take the five feet and maybe a foot or two more?
Partially into the 20 feet.
Okay.
A small amount.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, the next speaker will be Jackie Saletti, followed by John Morgan.
Welcome back.
Hi, thanks. Okay, so, first of all, I just got this, so I can't, I just got this on the 5th, and it's the 8th. It just, and I happened to see it online, I was watching the meeting. So I'm fortunate, I don't know how many other people, that's probably why you only got two emails, and I know one was my husband, and he was addressing the 8th, that there was only 18 feet, not 20. So I don't know the confusion with that. But anyway, I don't think we should, with that, I don't think we should generalize all the alleys. Our alley's not paved. My mom, sorry, Mom, she's 85 years old, 86, and her friends are of that age, and for them to park four houses down and walk on a gravel road with potholes is dangerous. She's slipped in the gravel herself, so that's, for us, that's dangerous. And like I said, we're not that big of a deal. If you go down to, in between Wool and Decatur, there's a white van, I think he sent you a picture of it, halfway into the alley. I mean, that's the kind of stuff that just needs to be addressed as if somebody's parking in the middle of Natomah Street. I mean, we don't even, they don't hand out tickets for no parking in Folsom, where it's clearly marked no parking. So here's some of the, first of all, some of the alleys are smaller than others, there's cars blocking half the alley. Then give them a warning or issue a ticket, just like you would if anybody was parking on public property. Or how about no parking on trash days? That's, I agree with that. If a car's in the way of trash, skip their trash pickup and have the driver take a photo or take a note. I'm sure he has a route, he has his route memorized and knows cars that are always in his way. That way, a house can't call for a missed pickup and cost the city more money. With regards to fire trucks, I had a fire years back. They did not access from our back alley, they used the long hoses and access from the paved main front streets. Also, there are no fire hydrants nor, nowhere near the back alleys, at least not next to ours, we're kind of in the middle, so I have a feeling they're, very rarely they go through there. If the lack of room for the fire trucks is truly the issue, that would close off half of the normal streets in Old Town Folsom. Have you ever tried to drive down Wool Street or Decatur during the farmer's market or a concert? You cannot even barely get one car by, let alone two. If this is, if this. If this is, if this pass is due to fire, then all normal streets will have to be addressed and no parking signs to be placed all through Old Town. We know parking's already an issue in the historic districts. Let's address the areas and the people who are actually blocking the thoroughfare. Thank you for considering all these ideas. Oh, also, my brother was visiting, sorry.
That's okay.
My brother was visiting, he had a motor home. He parked right on Wool Street, the police said you're fine there. The neighbor came out, threatened my brother, called in, they told him that he couldn't park there, so there's two different, I know, I think it's like a 48-hour, you can park a motor home on a public street, so that's really it. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
So my motion would be to go back and come up with a couple, just don't automatically say, "This is done," it's, happens so quick.
No parking except by Mom's place?
Right.
Okay, got it.
Okay, the next speaker, John Morgan, followed by the final speaker under this item, Paul Kerfield.
Hey there, John. Welcome.
Mr. Mayor, Council, thanks for letting me speak for a moment. My comments are very brief and regarded the letter that I received about this issue. I have a property in the historic district, and I repeatedly saw 20 feet mentioned as the width of the alleys, but actually, that, the alley behind my property is 32 feet wide, the alley, the alley between Coloma, the Percival Dean Alley between Coloma and Mill Street is 32 feet wide. Plenty adequate space for fire, everybody. It's pretty wide. It's actually wider than the, than the Rumsey Way that's adjacent to it. So if the ordinance said I couldn't park on the alley, you're actually parking on a street that's even narrower than the alley. So they're all, maybe all the rest are 20 feet, but our alley is 32 feet. Thank you.
So Mark, what was your proposal to add the 20-foot language in there? Is that in response to this? To preserve 20 feet of clear access? Or was it related to the stated width in most of the alleys? My, my suggestion was only that if the council desires to include any language about defining the width of the alleyways, that we should define it as, as is shown in our assessor's parcel books, which is 20 feet. I don't know what the parcel map says for the Percival Dean Alley. That has not been one of the areas that my drivers have encountered any issues and certainly don't know that it would be a subject of enforcement. Certainly not at that width.
Gotcha. Okay.
Here's the AP map right here, it's 32 feet.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, our next and final speaker under this item is Paul Kerfield.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, everybody. A lot of good comments tonight. I have to agree with some, some I don't agree with. I got my lettered on the 5th, so that's the notice I got from Saturday to today. And my concern is with the, where, I looked at the analysis online, and they say park their vehicles on nearby public street. Staff has determined that there is adequate parking available to displaced vehicles. Well, I've lived in Old Town for 32 years. There's been a parking problem since the town has started to grow, which was late 90s, you know, when we started to boom. That's when the parking problem started. I appreciate Ms. John's comment, because I, that was one of my questions. How can an ADU be built without proper parking? And it's hard for me to believe that the state can make you, allow somebody to build something without adequate parking. There's numerous ADUs in the neighborhood, one bedrooms, five people are living there. Okay, that's five cars. I don't want parking problems in front of my house. And that's my biggest issue. Where is the adequate parking for displaced vehicles going to be?
If I may ask, would you tell us which street you live on?
I'm in the Decatur-Percival area.
Okay, gotcha. All right.
And I don't, you know, I have the alley next to me.
Well, yeah, you're, you're just.
My lot's 150 feet wide, 10-foot easement for the alley.
Yeah.
10 feet on the other side, that makes 20-foot alley.
I only ask because as you get away from Sutter Street, it loosens up the parking.
Well, there's the park, there's parking problems from Sutter Street all the way to Bidwell, and I mean, this isn't a new thing.
Of course not.
And what I've seen is, the old thing's never been solved, and we're going to start creating something on top of that without solving one problem, and that's parking in the historic district. So I would want to know, since they put it in the analysis, where are they identifying this adequate parking spaces? I mean, it's a fair question. If you're going to write it on a piece of paper, where is this adequate parking? Because I don't know where it is.
We did some extensive parking studies when we looked at no parking ordinances in the area, and also to just address everybody's continuing concerns about this. And we had a mixed bag of responses from your neighbors about whether they wanted us to enforce no street parking during certain times of the week. Tried signage, nobody wanted to do permits, which would have kind of permanently identified how many vehicles any particular residents could have, or at least which, how many they did have. That got shot down. And on any given day, this picture is relatively accurate, there are a few parking spaces here and there, to my view. On a Saturday morning, when the.
Well, I live in the district, and I walk it every day and ride my bike every day. So I know some of the spots that are on these, you know, I recognize them not far from my house.
Sure.
And they're ones that were built without parking.
Yeah.
So where is the adequate parking for these people going to move to? Hopefully not in front of my house, because I should not have to pull my garbage cans out, I should not have to put my cars on the street to protect my frontage. So when I have guests come over, they don't have to park in front of somebody else's house to come visit me.
Can I ask you?
I mean, and that's fair.
May I ask a question? Can you define what a parking problem is to you?
To me, well, unfortunately, our society is, people are rude these days. I'm old school. You just don't pull up in front of somebody's house, park your car and take off for days on end. That's nonsense. I mean, call me crazy, but that's nonsense. It's rude, it's discourteous, and it shows no respect for the homeowner.
So you find that in your area, there are vehicles that get parked for days on end without getting moved?
Yes. Oh, yeah. And like I say, I walk the historic district every day. I walk about five miles every morning, and you can see it.
Yeah. Well, I, I.
I mean, it's obvious.
I, I think maybe in certain spots. I've had a business in the historic district for almost nine years now. I think parking is, parking gets limited on Saturday mornings or if there's an event in the district, but parking has, because it's something that I keep my eye on, I haven't seen an overwhelming amount of parking not available in the district when there's not an event going on or, you know, farmer's market tends to. That's why I asked you, how do you, what do you define?
It's, someone should not pull up in front of your house that's running down the street because they don't have adequate parking and feel that their parking spot is now in front of your house. And leave their cars there for days on end.
Noted.
That's just not right.
Understood.
And hopefully, you know, this is one meeting, but there's some, you know, the parking problem needs to be solved. I agree, you know, I've known Mark a long time. I drove a garbage truck for the city, so I know these alleys real well. Okay? It's been a problem for a long time. But most people keep their stuff, most places have a five-foot setback. I think it's down to four now, if you were to build something in an alley, where you can park parallel with alley, be in front of your garage, and not be blocking that. And that's, was the idea of a five-foot setback, which I think got reduced to four. So if that was implemented, you wouldn't have a problem back there. People could park parallel, everybody could go about their business. Now, I know in these old alleys, people have encroached, there's shrubbage, and, you know, how you go about that with homeowners is, you know, I don't know how you go about that. Write them a letter, do whatever you got to do. I don't have a, one thing I would like to see, too, with the signs, they're speeding up and down alleys already, there's dirt, dirt spines everywhere, and I see some of the alleys, they're putting rock down, they're rolling it, they're paving it. Well, that's just increasing people to go faster. So I would like to see 15 mile, 10 or 15, I think the law is 15, I would prefer 10, going up and down the alleys.
We'll have to, that's at a different meeting, Paul.
And with any of this stuff we talk about, it's all about enforcement, because we don't have enforcement on parking now, so how are we going to have enforcement on anything else?
Thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, council members.
Do we have a speed limit in our alleys?
We have a speed limit on every street in Folsom.
And that is 15?
I believe the vehicle code defines alleyways as 15 mile per hour zones.
I'm assuming that we don't have that posted.
Do not.
Yeah.
Mark, you know, I always have, you know, we make these decisions with sometimes unintended consequences. And right now, we're saying, oh, there's no parking in the historic district in these alleys, but there is now, I understand, one street that is, that is wider than the 20 feet that would allow an emergency vehicle to get in. I would, you know, it's difficult for me to make a blanket decision to say absolutely no parking, knowing that we're going to have an unintended consequence that's going to be negatively impact people that the problem is not impacting. And so is there a way to do it on the streets that are just those that are of concern, that are, I guess, what, under 20? Under 20 feet?
That's certainly our intent. You know, we don't, this isn't intended to be an ordinance that's going to unleash, you know, parking enforcement on a daily basis. It's intended to create a legal means for us when our drivers or our emergency vehicles are impeded, that we can, you know, cite repeat offenders and move those vehicles if we have to. It is not intended for us to, you know, go out and measure that, you know, someone's car is jutting out into the alley by two feet, you know, we can get around that. That's not, not our issue here. Our issue is making it very clear, those alleys are not designed for parking. You should not have an expectation that you can park a private vehicle in there without consequence. So, you know, the enforcement should be very sporadic. I mean, we're talking about only five to seven ADUs in this count that do not have any parking provision that would be impacted.
Sorry, I should make myself a little more clear. On the street, on the alleyways that are below 20 feet, I could understand implementing this. And as I mentioned in the last meeting, you know, I have a parking lot in the back of my, in the back of my business, so getting into Sutter Street Figueroa Alley, when there's a car parked next to the building, makes it very difficult for me to get in, and I have to drive a little bit farther to the right where the trees are now hitting the right side of my truck. And it doesn't happen just every so often, I mean, it happens more often than not. So I get the problem, and I've said it before, where if an emergency vehicle needed to get into that area of the district, it would create a problem for a white truck to get in. And I, and I can totally see how that would be a problem for the waste trucks. But my question is, on the streets that exceed the 20 feet, those that exceed the 20 feet would then have the limitations when the problem really isn't in there? And I guess maybe I'm referring to, who was the third gentleman that spoke? Is that Paul?
John Morgan.
John. This decision would negatively impact his street, but his street isn't, isn't, isn't a part of the problem. So is there a way to have it where this would be only for the streets that, only for the alleys that are below 20 feet?
Absolutely. We simply would not post or enforce in alleyways where we do not have the restriction that's affecting our ability to provide services. I would also point out, there was, there's been several comments related to the fire access that, you know, there's no water, there's no hydrants, but I would remind the council and the public that our fire department also provides emergency service, medical service, using, using all of their apparatus. So, so medical response also uses those alleyways.
Other questions?
No questions. I have more comments, but let others go first.
I have a question. What, what ability do we have now to cite a vehicle that is really egregious about, you know, impeding into the alley? I mean, maybe this is a question Sergeant Galovich, I know is here in a different role tonight, but, so, you know, if there is a truck, a van, a car, whatever, that is, you know, kind of just parked really wonky in the alley and people are having to go around it, like even how you had to maneuver your, can we, can PD come out and cite them for something? Or do we even have anything on the books that you could cite them for right now?
Only on Bug Camp Road.
Only on Bug Camp Road. Perhaps if there was such inadequate room that you couldn't even get a single passenger vehicle through, there might be the vehicle code having to do with obstructing traffic. So that certainly is on the books and applies to any public right-of-way. That's the only one that comes to mind for me. We don't, I don't think we have any other local ordinances that speak to that.
So that particular code references a passenger vehicle? Couldn't we use the fire truck width as a standard or the operation space around a fire truck as the width that's necessary? And then just use the ordinance that we have?
That's possible. You know, I can't speak to.
Yes, I'm looking to the city attorney, but this is probably a little esoteric.
Unless you're what you mean, Mr. Mayor.
If Sarah and I were to block Natoma Street out front by parking a little ways from the curb on either side and make it so that, you know, a passenger car could get between us, wouldn't we still be cited by the police department for being a nuisance? I mean, don't we have effectively a nuisance ordinance that would address that kind of behavior?
In certain cities, certainly in some cities that I worked with before, that would be the case.
But not this one.
But not at Folsom. Folsom has never worked that way.
Well, it hasn't worked that way, but.
But having said that, the law is there to allow officers to enforce, should they choose to enforce. They do have options not to enforce.
The law exists that they could enforce, or they need this new one to be able to enforce it, I guess is what I'm getting at. Because the question's a good one, if we're already, if you're already being a nuisance. Yeah.
The question, the issue in my mind is, at the time when an emergency is there, whether it's medical or fire.
Right.
Or even for refuse pickup, it would be too late.
I got you.
To enforce, because the obstruction is already there. But should the council wish to have the department take another look, maybe refine the language, let us know? We don't necessarily need to do the second reading tonight, we can bring it back for another new first reading. You just need to give staff direction.
Do we know how wide a paramedic, how much is, an ambulance is different than an engine? Yeah, I know, that's, it's okay, it's a detail.
I don't have the width at my fingertips, I'm sorry.
It's under 18 feet, though, for sure, so, okay.
But they can access the front, front road.
They can, yeah.
Right?
Well, yes and no. If you're an ADU who your front door is on the alley, the convenient place for an ambulance to park is at your front door, so that you can move in and out of there.
Yeah, I did want to express, Chief Casano is not here, but he has expressed concern with emergency vehicles going through the alleys. I don't think he would have said that if they don't use the alleys.
Sure, of course.
Yeah. Mayor, I was about to ask Pam Johnson on that.
Oh, gotcha.
Point. It's not by rules, when we are approving the ADU, they must access the alley. It's the same property. We are talking emergency. That's the point I just want to make. You know, it's not a separate property.
Okay.
So as a public works, not public works, you know, community development, when we are allowing to build an ADU, in case of emergency, they can use the main street to come under tree. That's what I just want to make it.
Okay. All right, we have a couple of people that asked to comment on this. I would ask that you do that, but provide new information if you can.
Okay, so we do have two additional people requesting to speak under this. Sue Schaefer, if you want to go ahead and approach the podium, followed by Leo Grover.
Hi.
Thank you, hello.
Sue Schaefer here. I'll keep it brief. I think maybe.
I think maybe if this is an issue, it's not a brand-new issue maybe to Folsom, but I was born and raised in San Francisco. And we have narrow alley streets, problems all over. Part of what they do is, they post on garbage days. You know, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, you can park on this side. Tuesday, Wednesday, you can only park on this side between the hours. But it's clear, it's posted. You brought up a point, they do not have no parking signs in your alleys. So, if you're going to even approach this, okay, you might even want to start with, like you were saying, you've got to have, you've got to start somewhere. Even if it's not going to be no parking. You should be able to come up, I would think that maybe we could search some other places that have already had some of these issues, and maybe they have some ideas that we might be able to build off of, that might be a good idea. And I just feel like, when you are talking about the fire and ambulance and everything, okay, all my family members are in all of that. And they do go mostly to the front. That is mostly through the front. And if they didn't have an option at the alley, they would have to go to the front. Just the way it is. So, that's all. I just thought that maybe there are other smaller towns with alleys and things, we're not the first ones, and maybe we should look at some of their, see what kind of ideas they have.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Leo Grover, and this will be the final speaker.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Thank you very much for all you do. I see you out there all the time. You're always got your flag out there. Congratulations on what you're doing. You might know me better by my tree, it's the Grover tree. It's a beautiful tree on Sibley Street. So, I've got that alley behind me. And I came because there's really not a problem in my alley, except for like this one specific house. So, your trash truck guys, I absolutely, you know, feel bad for them when they're going through, but they know the homes, that are the problem. They absolutely know. It's got to be consistent, because my alley is consistently pretty good, except this one specific home. He's always got his truck out there, another one. And then he'll park over by that cemetery, that's, you know, across the street from the Catholic church. So, he'll park a lot of his trucks there, but there's always a consistent problem on my alley. And I'm sure your drivers could just easily note that, because I've gotten notes on my trash cans before, I've, you know. So, if they can take the time to do that, I think they could at least raise a flag on which home is a habitual problem for them. That's my take. All right, thank you.
Very good, thank you. The tree is beautiful.
I know this doesn't...
Our public hearing is closed.
The lack of access for emergency vehicles, I think, is a concern. But I guess as far as the solid waste pickup, Mark, does it ever happen where we just say, we couldn't pick up your trash today, sorry, we couldn't get through, we didn't pick it up? And there's just kind of a natural consequence?
It happens quite frequently.
Does it? Okay.
And then what happens? They complain, obviously.
They call and complain to our customer service and schedule for the driver to come back out. Hopefully, the problem will have been corrected and the driver has to make another trip out. So, it certainly can get resolved, but it is not efficient by any stretch of the imagination.
Do you see the same people repeating, do you see the repeat offenders? Like this gentleman just said that there was a house in the alley that they know, the neighbors know, you know?
Yeah, to Mr. Rover's point, now certainly I don't drive these routes daily, so I can't speak to that. But I think it is a fair point that there probably are repeat offenders that are known and can be addressed. But I think there are also the intermittent ones that, you know, that pop up, you know, contractors that are doing work on these ADUs. I noticed when I went by the funeral home, there were a large number of vehicles that were parked in the alley adjacent to the funeral home as well. That also made it difficult to maneuver through there. So, while it is a valid point that there are folks that are habitual and can be addressed, it doesn't solve the entire problem.
So, I think, you know, Mike Silette said it in his email, and so did Sue Schaefer, I think is, that I think we can build up to this. You know, the public, just, the letter was sent out on October 1st. Many of the people that spoke today said they received it October 5th, which was just three days ago. I think Mike said it in his email, clarification on the legality of how to park. Someone mentioned parallel parking along the alleyways. No parking on waste days, to see the impact of that. I don't know if there's a reason to rush this, you know, I mean, including the entire historic district and the ban on parking in any alleyway. So, I think there, maybe there are some good ideas shared today. Maybe this is something that we can just continue, have staff present some other options, continue to get feedback, or, you know, we can make a limited motion today. That would be my suggestion.
Well, this is the second reading. If we wanted to make any changes to this, would we have to do a new first reading? Okay. So, for what it's worth, I would move that we go ahead and pass this for a very specific reason. And that it's, the enforcement or non-enforcement in certain alleys is completely up to us, right? It's unreasonable to try and make people probably not park in a 32-foot-wide alley, which is as big as a city street. And there's no reason for us to post signs there. I think, you know, Mark hit it perfectly in terms of the sequence of events. We're trying to, A, give a tool to Public Works and our police department so that they can start to enforce, you know, a parking set of rules so that those alleys are accessible for emergency vehicles. And the first step of that is an education process and putting signs up. It's not towing vehicles on day one. It is something that we can ease our way into and deal with the, you know, what should be the relocation of a relatively small number of vehicles, based on the fact that there's only, you know, a handful of ADUs that don't have off-street parking available to them already. But I personally, I think we need to err on the side of caution and the ability of emergency vehicles to access all parts of everybody's property, if that question is on the table. Because if we make a choice to say, nah, we don't really need fire trucks to get into those alleys, the next bad thing that happens will be on us. So, I move that we go ahead and pass this. I entertain a second or an alternative motion.
Discussion, yes. Mayor, I was just, you know, listening and I read it. Historic District has a parking problem. We've got to agree on that. Whether, you know, people try to find if their own homeowner can find the alley. If not, a new person, they can pick the, you know, the top, the main road. We put some signs and we did a rigorous outreach. You and I were also there at AFRA and all those people. I think we need to do more outreach, that's number one. By just passing this one, I just want, you know, certainly, we want to support the Chief Casano and our paramedics. But it may be a rush right away to pass this one and start implementing, and it's messy, and people more come, not everybody read. Step back and revisit the problem, what exact problem? If it is Wednesday or Thursday, the main garbage truck may be implementing that. And again, by looking at those, either paramedics, that's why I was, you know, looking at Pam. But I answered my question, you know, when the ADUs are issued, they can certainly access from the main road. So, that's my point, you know, by passing this one, the message goes out. We already have a parking problem in Historic District.
So, you're making a substitute motion to table this, or...
Table this one and do the outreach and come back after, you know, discussing with our staff again and identifying those critical, small allies and implement it.
Okay, is there a second for the substitute motion? All right, let's take a vote on the substitute then.
Can I just ask, is there a date certain for the continuance? Is there a date by which you would want that brought back?
November...
We can leave that at the discussion of the mayor and the city manager.
Again, it's, you know, Mark and Chief Casano, there's some work needs to be done.
I don't think we want to delay this one very far, so...
And what do you mean outreach? What is it you want us to do? We just mailed a letter to everybody who would have been affected.
We mailed 490 letters.
Yeah.
Right? And people just read it and only handful of them are digesting the fact. So, give time and have our associations there, our Historic District Residents Association, reaching out and explaining to them.
So, okay, so the letter explains exactly what is on the table. We've had two public hearings on this, so there's video evidence of what's going on that anybody can look at. If we brought this back on October 22nd, would that be adequate time for people to absorb this and provide their commentary? In your mind?
My alternate motion says, like, put for garbage trucks as a primary. On that day, don't park. That also is there.
Mr. Mayor, may I just make sure we're not confusing the motions here? We have two motions now. Are we withdrawing the first motion and now just entertaining a vote on the second motion?
I will allow a clear substitute motion to be voted on and withdraw mine. But I need the motion to be, I need the motion to be clear. So, can you try again, please?
Sure.
What do you want us to do?
Number one, it's not enough time for residents to digest what we are doing here.
What is the motion, not your commentary about what we need to do?
My commentary is, do not pass this one right now.
Table the motion as it's ready.
Table the motion.
Okay, until October 22nd?
If 22nd is okay with our staff, because they have to do some work.
But that was my question to you. What outreach are you asking for? They just mailed 490 letters. They've already been in contact with the Folsom, I'm getting my acronyms confused, Hefra, Historic Folsom Residents Association. You were already in contact with them. Did they object to this action?
They did not object, but they also did not endorse.
Yeah. But so, I think the outreach has been done. Maybe we, if you want to allow more time for people to respond, then that's fine, I think.
Okay, so table until October 22nd?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, is there a second for that?
Did you, in your commentary, like, hey, you said that you want to enforce no parking for garbage days? But I did not hear that.
Yes.
So, is your motion to table this, and your alternate motion is to put forth one half of it, that we are going to disallow parking until the garbage is picked up on garbage days and notice people? So, that will go into effect, that's something new?
Yeah, that would be a modification to what we've had, and we'd have to start over again with a new first reading, so...
So, your motion is to only accept that portion of the enforcement is on garbage days? And then continue the outreach until...
So, if we table what we have right now, we're reconsidering what we have right now?
Yes.
If we want something different, we are asking the staff to write something different and bring it back to us in two weeks.
And we need direction...
I'm okay with either, I just need to know what you guys want.
What are we, what's the direction?
Let's table this to the next meeting, October 22nd. We'll have more time.
Okay.
So, that's the second reading is being continued to October 22nd?
I'm going to withdraw my motion for the sake of having taken a vote on this motion. So, we have a motion and a second to table this item until October 22nd to allow for additional public comment time.
Yes, and I, something that I would be interested in hearing back from Mark on is, are there, can you give specific alleys where we know there is a problem? Maybe it's two alleys where it's, you know, it's a continuous problem every week, and maybe we just start there, where we limit the parking on those particular alleys. Can you do that, or no?
I can certainly go back to my drivers who work those routes and have them identify specific alleyways, yes.
I also have another clarification. Could we get data on if there has been any calls for the fire department to go down, and they've got, they wanted to go down the alley but couldn't, or they needed to go down the alleyways and they couldn't? So, any data on that? I know the chief's not here, but if it's coming back, I would like to see that.
Okay, ask chief that, yes.
And then I have one more request also. If we can get a mapping, Mark, of the streets that are, that exceed the 20-foot width?
The ones that exceed the 20?
The ones that exceed it, right.
We can do that.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Okay, Councilmember Zorba?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
Chalamchera?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Kozowski?
No. Motion passes, okay. Mr. Chalamchera, you wanted to discuss item number six.
Yes, sir. This is, I just want to give kudos to our staff. I know Rebecca was also mentioning about this item. There is, a lot of work went from our staff. And when we look at this, item number six, our engineers estimated $27 million cost. But with our collective effort and reaching out to the, you understand, Mayor, certainly, a bigger group of vendors and entertaining more people and creating that competition, give or take $9 million lesser than the projected engineer's estimate of 27. I want to give a, you know, big shout-out to the markers and everyone involved, parks and rec department, making this $9 million lesser than estimated. That's the comment I'm making to staff, and Elaine, you can pass it in the EMT. Thank you.
Outstanding, okay, thank you very much. Anybody else have questions about item number six or comments?
I'll move the item.
A second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Can we call the roll?
Councilmember Zorba?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
Chalamchera?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Kozowski?
Yes. Okay, that brings us to council requests for future agenda items. Ms. Rodriguez, anything?
No.
Zorba?
Not at the moment.
Chalamchera?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay, and Sarah?
No.
All right, excellent. City managers report.
Thank you, Mayor. The Public Works Department will implement the next phase of traffic improvements at the intersection of Iron Point Road and East Bidwell Street. The project will enhance traffic flow and safety at one of the city's busiest intersections. Construction will start on Sunday night, October 20th, and continue through Saturday morning, October 26th. Work will take place from 9:00 PM to 5:00 AM to minimize disruptions. There will be a temporary lane and ramp closures. Drivers should follow detour signs and drive carefully. You can find out more by contacting Zach Bosch in the Public Works Department at zbosh@folsom.ca.us. One of my favorite events, the Folsom Fire Department will host its annual open house and pancake breakfast this Saturday, October 12th, at Fire Station 35 at 535 Glen Drive. All residents are invited to meet firefighters, tour the station, explore fire trucks and equipment, and learn important safety tips. The event will be held from 9:00 to 11:00. And another one of my favorite events is join Folsom Police and the Folsom Fire Department at their annual Public Safety Trunk or Treat event at 9:00 AM Saturday, October 26th, at the Folsom Police Department on 46 Natoma Street. Trick or treat safely as you check out police and fire department vehicles and equipment, meet officers and firefighters, police canines, and our horse and more. All ages are welcome to this free event. The Folsom Water Vision Project is a planning effort to guide the management of the city's water resources over the next 50 years. The community is encouraged to attend the fourth in a series of meetings to learn about the project and share needs, interests, and goals for creating a resilient water future. The meeting will be held on Tuesday, October 15th, at 6:30 PM at the Rotary Clubhouse. And finally, this October, the City of Folsom Waste and Recycling Division will conduct route reviews over the next few weeks to encourage proper recycling. These random visual audits check curbside garbage, recycling, and organics cans. During review, staff will inspect bins and leave feedback tags. Cans with accepted recyclables receive "Keep Up The Good Work" tags, while those with over 10% contaminant get "Oops" tags. No materials will be removed, and reviews only happen when bins are curbsides. Curbside, California's SB 1383 requires these reviews. No fines are issued in 2024, but residents may need special pickups if contamination exceeds... No fines are issued in twenty twenty-four, but residents may need special pickups if contamination exceeds ten percent. And you can learn more at folsom.ca.us/wastecollection. Thank you, Mayor.
Is the attaboy sticker a gold star?
I will check on that. I'll make that my top priority.
Okay, okay. All right, very good. Council members, any comments? Start with YK today.
I'll make it quick. Cable Commission, I think very soon, countywide outreach and notifications going. If you guys have any challenges with the cable, you can reach out to the Cable Commission. You don't have to remember anything. You will get a letter for most of the county. And the second one is, I know we are almost, you know, offered a, um, um, new executive director offer letter. Even though I was out of town, we were still participating. So who's however is going to be appointed from this council, they will have a new executive director at the Sacramento Cable Commission. And the last one, I know several people sent thoughts and prayers. I was out of country for a couple of weeks. Thank you, everyone. I, I still remember Vice Mayor Aquino said, before I joined this council, I was on Parks and Rec Commission and Arts and Cultural Commission. We tracked the commissioner's attendance. She, she picked my name. YK was hundred percent time attendance, Parks and Rec, and Arts and Culture until last meeting. So I, I just want to take that as a sincere commitment if I take a role. But the last meeting, I got to travel to overseas because of some hardship in our family. Thank you, everyone, for sending the thoughts and prayers.
All right, Sarah?
Just one thing. So yesterday, I was joined by Stephanie Henry in the Community Development Department. She and I met with some folks from Alter Regional. If you're not familiar with Alter Regional, it's a private nonprofit, fully funded by the state, and they provide services and support to individuals with developmental disabilities. It can be from birth up and through their whole entire life. And the reason we met with them is because of conversations that this council had previously, you know, earlier in the year, and my desire to make sure that, that we offer housing for individuals of all ability levels in the city. And so Alter Regional is working with developers. They've done projects in Sacramento, Wesack, Roseville, whereby Alter Regional is able to apply for some gap funding. So for example, if you had, let's say, a multifamily or affordable apartment builder whose project did not quite pencil out, and they needed some gap funding, Alter Regional has, you know, access to some funding whereby they could do a hundred thousand dollars per unit. And so what they're doing is, let's say you have an apartment complex with, with a hundred units, up to twenty-five percent of those you could ask to be set aside for individuals with developmental disabilities. And, and they could apply for, for this gap funding. So anyway, really interesting stuff. They sent Stephanie and me an example of a proposal from a housing developer that, that was approved, the grant funding was approved, and gave her some contact information so she could reach out to the folks in Roseville and Wesack and things. So just, yeah, I think it's important, as we talked about, that we have housing for folks of all ages, all income levels, and also we want to add all abilities in the city, too. So very, very positive meeting. Thank you.
Thank you for that report. Anna? Nothing. Rosario?
YK, you're, I'm sorry that you had to go through that, but I probably would have said, no, I, I can't attend, because I, I don't want to miss my hundred percent attendance on city council. Unless, it's election season, so everybody has received their ballots. Make sure that you expressed your, this is a great time to express who you're, who you will be voting for, and that's it.
Okay, outstanding. Okay, just a couple of quick things. The SECOG Land Use Committee met last week to make a recommendation to the full board about which, um, uh, priority project list we wanted to push forward as part of the new MTP. It is, the, the, the idea is that it's a projection over the next twenty-five years of all of the road capacity and projects that are desired by the community. And then that list is cut down to those that fit into the budget, and then those are further whittled down to that list that fits the budget and then also allows us the chance to meet the greenhouse gas emission target that the California Air Resources Board has set for the region. So it is one of these instances like contract negotiation, where if everybody is equally unhappy, that's usually a decent result. It is not the last word on any particular capacity project. So things that are not on that list can end up getting built regardless. But it is a stab at a plan that we can implement over time. So that recommendation is going to go to the full board of SECOG next month, or at our next meeting, likely to be adopted, because there aren't good alternatives. But the process of updating the Metropolitan Transportation Plan and the Sustainable Communities, Sustainable Communities, what is it? Strategy. Both of those things are continuing apace and set to be done sometime later this year. So that's happening. And then I just wanted to do, give congratulations to two of everybody's favorite local businesses who turned twenty-five. It was on the cover of the Folsom Telegraph also. Murray and his gang that run the Powerhouse Pub have been there for twenty-five years and doing a great job. If you haven't been in there recently, they got a new, like, disco dance floor that's all video-enabled, so you can look like you're in the seventies doing, doing that. And then Suzanne and her team at Scott Seafood, they moved to the Roundhouse from across the river, but that business has been here in Folsom also for twenty-five years and is thriving. So congratulations to both of them. And then the last thing, I got the honor of being part of a presentation of an award to one of the teachers at Folsom High School, Mr. Bias, that all the kids know, yeah? He, he's one of the career technical education teachers, and specifically is the teacher for the, what passes for a drafting class nowadays, which is a CAD and computer-aided manufacturing class, so that you learn how to draw it and send it to the machine that will make it right away. So it, as soon as I walked in that room, I had flashbacks to my high school drafting class, but they have much, much, much better tools now. And he was awarded sort of a Teacher of the Year Award by Harbor Freight, which means he got a check for fifteen thousand dollars in the school district to support the CTE program. At Folsom High, got a check for thirty-five thousand dollars. So blatant pitch, shop at Harbor Freight. All right, with that, we are adjourned.